For the pledge of the flag, please. Welcome everyone to the January 17th meeting. A little chilly out there. I think it's chilly in here. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of January 3rd? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report, payment of the bills.
Go move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Just the million, million hundred and thirty thousand?
Yes.
That is a big check.
It's done the annual best service for the wastewater treatment plant.
Very good. Thank you. You answered that.
That probably stands out.
That got me. I also wanted to give the cash balances currently in our general fund. We have $2,380,738.33. In our water fund, we have $3,174,794.71. In our sewer fund, we have $9,58,639.15. In our major facility fund, we have $4,759,753.75. For a total of $19,373,925.94. And we took out that million. That's why we're under 20 million this month. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Any other questions or comments on the financial report? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Lou, we have a budget amendment. Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Steve does. I'm sorry, Steve.
Budget number 2018-03. To recognize $5,970 from the county. That's for the purpose of transferring it to Sangley Fire Company for the water, watering, the fire protection. And families grant that the county gets from the state before it's a town reported to Sangley.
We have a motion to approve budget amendment 2018-03.
Go move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that budget amendment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we also have a second budget amendment tonight?
Right. Budget amendment number 2018-04. To recognize $16,412 in steam funds and their use in purchasing a John Deere Gator under the State of Maryland contract used by the Alton Police Department.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2018-04?
Go move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the Gator? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Okay, it is 7:05 and we're going to have a public hearing tonight on ordinance 1-2018 Medical Facilities and is being presented for introduction purposes to the board. So Jean, here one, can you tell us a little bit about where we're at?
Sure. We're looking to amend the Alton zoning ordinance with respect to certain healthcare uses, land use. So this ordinance was heard before the planning commission last night and was unanimous recommendation to adopt the ordinance that's written. So the ordinance is concerning Alton zoning ordinance Article 2, Basic Definitions and Interpretations, Article 10, permissible uses, and Article 12, supplementary use regulations. And this is for the purpose of amending this Article, Alton zoning ordinance Article 2. Do you want me to read the whole? Okay, just get to the needed it. Okay. So under Article 2, we're adding a definition for counseling facility, which is Basic Definitions and Interpretations, counseling facility. Mental health treatment facility for the practice of mental health counseling, the practice of marriage and family therapy, pregnancy counseling, anger management, drug and alcohol abuse, and/or the practice of clinical social work on a non-intensive outpatient basis only. This use strictly prohibits the onsite dispensing of both medicinal and non-medicinal drugs. And that's a definition that we didn't have originally, so we're adding that definition. Then under Article 10, permissible uses, Section 7, permissible uses table, we're going to add Section 2.113 pharmacies. It will be permitted in the C2 and business industrial zoning districts. C2 is highway commercial. And it will be formatted, consistent with permissible uses table. Other changes include Section 3.110. Under operations, this is subsection, this is a subsection under office clerical research and services not primarily related to the sale of goods or merchandise. So this subsection 3.110 will remove the term physicians under operations designed to attract and serve a low volume of customers or clients on the premises. 3.120 will remove the term offices or physicians or dentists. Under that, it will now read, 3.120 will read clinics of not more than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area permitted by special exception with conditions. We're removing it in the zoning district C1, which is the downtown district. We're continuing to allow it in C2, C3, and we're including a new district, the business industrial zoning district. So we're now allowing that in that district. New section will be 3.1, subsection will be 3.130. Primary offices of physicians with up to three professionals seeing patients, including nurse practitioners and physician assistants permitted by special exception in the C1, C2, C3, and business industrial zoning districts. That's new. Another new one is 3.140. Primary offices of physicians with four or more professionals seeing patients, including nurse practitioners and physician assistants permitted by special exception in the C2, C3, and BI zoning districts. 3.150 is also new. Counseling permitted by special exception in the C2, C3, and BI zoning districts. Other changes include, under subsection 7, which is institutional residence or care or confinement facilities. 7.100 for hospitals, clinics, and other medical, including mental health treatment facilities in excess of 10,000 square feet of gross floor area will be permitted by special exception with conditions in C2, C3. And the new one is Business Industrial Zoning District. Town center district has been stricken. And under 7.20, nursing care institutions, intermediate care institutions, handicapped or infirm institutions, and childcare institutions permitted by special exception in the ROC1 and C2 district. PUD has been removed because that subsection, that section of the zoning ordinance will be removed. We currently do not have any language for PUD, planned unit development, land use. But the town center zoning district has also been stricken from that. Under Article 12, supplemental use regulations, clinics will be changed from 3.130 to 3.120. That reference for that. Under clinics and state licensed medical clinics of less than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area. It was currently permitted in C1, C2, and C3. That will be changed to C2, C3, and business industrial zoning districts by special exception, subject to the following conditions. The conditions remain the same. There's a new condition that states shall be located a minimum of 1,000 linear feet from any school, daycare facility, or residentially zoned property for residential use. Under Section 17 for the supplemental use regulations regarding hospitals, that remains the same except that the business industrial zone has been added as a zone in which that's permitted by special exception, but the town center zone has been removed. And under the supplemental use regulations. There's no change in some of the requirements. There'll be additional requirements for the clinic use. They must provide a copy of the application for licensure from the State of Maryland for a state licensed medical clinic. Number five, all permits and licenses required to operate the clinic must be verified prior to opening to the public. Number six, as part of the special exception approval, the board may impose other reasonable requirements deemed necessary to safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. And number seven, waiting area shall provide an interior waiting area sufficient in size to accommodate one person per parking space as required. Area shall be calculated using five square feet for each person waiting. Those are all the changes to the ordinance with respect to healthcare uses.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for Jean in regards to this? The planning board last evening, I did not make the meeting, was there any changes?
No, they understood that there was, we're removing the PUD language. Didn't know if it was redundant that we were going to strike it at this point, if it was going to be removed, but it was, that was it. There was no other changes.
Well, I'd just like to compliment you on all the hard work. We put in a six-month moratorium on having facilities in our town and it's an ever-changing business and really appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone from the audience would like to make a comment or say anything in regards to this, please state your name and your address. Come on up and, or stand up and tell me your name and address and what's your comment?
Matthew Gidlin, G-I-D-L-I-N, 214 Dorf Street. Senior Residences. I have a comment that I think Chief of Police, Police Matthew Donnelly is the best chief of police that Efton has ever had. And I think that his department is absolutely sterling. And I believe that's a British term to mean that they're really great. I would like to make a motion that by unanimous proclamation that you made a four-star Chief of Police.
There you go. Well, thank you. Very nice. This is actually a public hearing in regards to the ordinance that we just heard, but I appreciate that input. Is there any comments from the public in regards to this? It is 7:14. This public hearing is closed in regards to this. Do we have a motion from the board to accept ordinance 1-2018 on medical facilities presented for introduction only? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jean. And I do have the notes on the four-star.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, next up, we have Union Hospital, Cecil County wants to come down and tell us a little bit about the project. I know we've got a, we want to do a pilot, which is a payment in low taxes. And I think it's a well worthwhile project and I think it's very important for the board to understand exactly what our neighbor, one of our finest neighbors is doing. Mark, if you could introduce the whole group, that'd be great.
I'll introduce our utility partner, which is Mr. Jackson from Unison.
And I'm Tom Dougal. I'm Unison's consultant from office.
Very good. Can you, of course, I said at the initial meeting, but I wanted to make sure the board was up to date with exactly what you're doing. Can you give us an idea or tell the board? It can be the Reader's Digest version. I don't want you to have to drag us through this, but give us some ideas of what you're doing. Tell us what you're doing and then what you need from us.
I'll start with a general overview and then we can kind of quickly bounce. And brevity is paramount probably. So Unison Energy, we are a combined heat and power company, which is, you might have heard of cogeneration. It's onsite power run by natural gas engines. And it's more efficient. When it works, there's certain customers that are usually good for it. Hospitals are key users of combined heat and power amongst other industries. Hospitals are the primary beneficiaries of it. Natural gas engines onsite and you provide the facility with power. We provide the facility with heat. In hospitals' case, hot water. It's more efficient, therefore it provides hospital facilities energy savings. It provides more reliable power, allows the facility to be up and running 100% when the grid goes out, still connected to the grid. And it reduces carbon footprint oftentimes, depending on the state where it is. So it's an old technology. It's becoming more and more prevalent these days for a lot of reasons I won't bore you with. We've been very active in Maryland with three hospital projects underway and Union Hospital is one of ours. And we're underway now doing a lot of design and engineering work. So we've been working, I've been working with Mark for well over a year. These projects take a long time to get up and running. The economics are tricky. It's very complicated. And in this case, and I'll let Tom talk a little bit about it here tonight, is, our model is to own, as an owner, operator, developer of these systems. So Unison Energy has investors and we own these systems. Therefore, our customers don't have to come out of pocket and buy them. They can be very expensive systems. So it opens up the market, if you will. A lot of hospitals don't have the budget to buy these systems. Or if they do have the budget or capital, they'd rather put that somewhere else. Maybe in the operating room or an MRI machine or what have you. So that's our model. The economics can get very tricky. By having this PPA model, which is a power purchase agreement, it shifts the ownership to us and therefore provides or gives an unintended tax consequence. And that's why we're here today to ask for this pilot program, which provides better economics, which we can then pass on to our customers, in this case, Union Hospital. And I think there's precedent for it in the State of Maryland. And so Tom can talk more to the details of where we are.
Sure. Basically, in the State of Maryland, an asset that's being used by a nonprofit would not be subject to personal property tax. In this case, because the financier of the project is a for-profit company, unintentionally makes, even if the assets are 100% located on a non-for-profit site for the benefit of a nonprofit, for use of a nonprofit, it makes them taxable to some degree. So that's the reason we're here, to ask for a pilot to alleviate burden. Been working with the county. We have an executive agreement for the county's portion of the tax. But we do understand that there will be an administrative fee to administer a pilot, unfortunately, the state still requires the process to happen. And you guys will have an administrative burden on that pilot. So we respectfully put in the manual, any limitations to cover those administrative costs on an annual basis.
I think everyone should have here to get, you've got, probably the Union Hospital and Unison Energy project. And here is the proposed dollar amount. It's on page 55.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, if I can give some more further details?
Yes.
In regards to the system itself. As everybody can, I'm sure you remember, when Superstorm Sandy came on first, it devastated large chunks of Maryland, as well as devastated pieces of Newark, as well as New Jersey. During that time, hospitals in New York City lost power and there are still subsections, as I understand, of New Jersey that are still trying to recover from that storm, which is four or five years old now. The beauty of this type of system is that when there is an event of that proportion, and Delmarva does a great job here. This is no slight by whom, Delmarva. Actually, Delmarva is a contributor to this project because it helps to take load off of the grid. You know, they're a major contributor to this project. But when there is an event such as that, the hospital will continue to run because we would be our own power station. We would be our own power station during the summer when even a minor interruption, like a thunderstorm taking out a pole or whatever. At that point, we would no longer have air conditioning in the hospital. Well, we all, from the news last year, what happened quickly in Florida, you know, where a nursing home facility lost power, didn't take the proper steps to move their patients across the street and people died, unnecessarily people died. So it's our charge, you know, as the hospital, is to make sure that we have systems that do work reliably, regardless of what's going on outside of the building. We believe that this is the best package that we can put together with our partners from Unison that will allow us to have onsite generation, not only for power, but also for steam and hot water. All three, you know, items that we use on a daily basis. Now, obviously, steam for hot water and heat. This type of weather, everybody realizes, sure, we all want lots of heat. But we use heat in the hospital 365. There are patient rooms that require heat or patients that require heat, even during the hottest day of the summer. So it's not like the steam gets turned off when it warms up outside. We're constantly using steam. We're constantly using hot water, obviously. And the need for electricity is great. This will power about somewhere between 85 and 90% of our total load for the hospital. So again, we still have the connection to Delmarva. When the system has to shut down for maintenance or for a major impulse, we still have the utility connection. What it will look like, we've gone to great lengths to design a barrier that will hide the ship's container, the seat container behind the wall. The container is specially designed to not only contain all the equipment, but also the bathroom, most of the noise. It's a 65 dB, which is just about us talking at this level. It's a 10 dB. So the patient rooms above will not have to be impacted by noise or whatever from the shipping.
Mark, currently, if Delmarva was to go down, you guys currently have generators?
Yes, we do. We have two emergency generators that cover about 35 or 40% of the hospital. So if it happened today, you know, it'll still work. We still have heat. We still have some of our imaging equipment, but departments like laundry, food services would be greatly impacted because it's, they're not deemed critical loads. Most hospitals diesel backup covers a fraction. It's emergency. You think of all a hospital being emergency, but it's really not all a hospital. And also, this is an extreme circumstance. Going back to the Sandy story, a lot of the hospitals that were shut down had diesel backup, but there was no way to get diesel after a couple of days. And that was an extreme, as I said, extreme circumstance. So this avoids that topic and all of that situation altogether.
And this is a BS?
Natural gas.
Natural gas powered?
A diesel engine, a diesel backup. It's like that. Looks similar. It's hard to tell the difference, but it's run on natural gas. We put everything into a shipping container, you know, 50 by 10. And it's got the engine in there. It's got the switch gears. It's got heat recovery, everything. And we build that offsite. We bring it to the site, get it as close as we can to the mechanical and electrical time and plug it in.
Where would that be?
It would be, if you're facing the front of the hospital, you've got the front entrance and you've got the flagpole. And then there's a driveway or a strip that goes to the Sangley surgery entrance. It would be on that left inside to the right of the driveway.
Is it going in beneath the driveway?
No.
No. Everything there stays the same?
That driveway. Well, we have to make a few modifications to. Currently, there's four parking spaces, handicap parking spaces. We have to switch to an angled parking. We'll lose one parking space and we have to modify one of the aisles right there. But that's really the only thing that's in the driveway.
Well, I can tell you, I saw the initial presentation and you and I spoke. And we're actually going to talk a little bit later on this.
Yeah, all the way around.
And well, we have, and you know, what we were discussing is, I said, well, if this is going to work for the hospital, why couldn't it work for us at the wastewater treatment plant?
Wastewater treatment plants are another industry that is a very good candidate for.
But I want to let you know, we just bought a backup generator.
We have three.
We have three. And we just bought them. So we're probably out of that mix right now. Well, maybe so. Maybe so. But I like the idea of it. Anyone from the board have any questions or comments in regards to this?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
This is a pilot plane for 20 years and then you come back with another 20.
Typically, with pilot agreements of this nature, generally that's how they're structured. Because the goal is, is that as long as the system, they have a caveat in there that says basically, as long as the system's in place, the pilot is in place to cover the unintended tax consequence. Now, the caveat that should be in the agreement that is in, for example, in the counties is, is that if the system goes away or is no longer running or no longer in service, then the pilot agreement terminates.
Lou, do you have any major issues with us?
How does the pilot agreement benefit Union Hospital? By us waiving our personal property tax and the generary from Unison, how does that benefit Union Hospital?
When I was speaking earlier, the three benefits really are to a hospital or a customer of these systems are savings, one, power reliability, two. And some folks put a lot of value in carbon footprint reduction. But the first two really are the major pieces of it. Mark is an engineer, facilities guy, so in hospitals, it's a balance. If I talk to Mark, he's all about the power liability. If I talk to the CFO at a hospital, it's about the savings. And the savings can be typically in Maryland, somewhere in the 10 to 15% range on energy spend. And hospitals right now across the country, and certainly East Coast, are in a real tight financial bind. They're trying, they're finding, you know, their revenues are somewhat set so they can do, trying to do everything they can to bring the costs down. By us owning this and having the tax relief, we can pass that on to the system, on to the hospital.
That's the point I'm making. This PPA you'll have. In the hospital and your company, Unison. Well, by the town and the county, for that matter, having a pilot agreement will benefit them through a savings that you won't have to pay in personal property tax. That's the point I'm trying to make here. We want to benefit Union Hospital in some tangible way.
Right. So what we do, when we put all the capital expenditure out on this and then we build a hospital for the power and the firms. And so if we, the better economics that the project has, we can provide the hospital the lower rent.
So it's passed through and then, you know, because the other point here is just to further fan for the hospital to, you know, in the State of Maryland, not having the hospitals, revenues are set. They can't, they can't gain any more revenue no matter what, you know, they do on an annual basis. The only time that they can generate, lack of a better term, capital investment ability is through call savings. So if they want to buy another MRI machine, it has to go into their budget. And in order to make room in that budget, they have to have some type of a call savings to do that, to better their services. So that also goes to this in the fact that if they're not financing an energy, if they're not financing this energy solution, it's being financed out on the outside. So that passes some savings right there at the top part. And then on top of that, with the better the economics of the energy agreement themselves, then that's more savings to the hospital. So to the point of the 10 to 15% is typically what they see as a savings. That 10 to 15% of the hospital's now savings can be reinvested in their goods, services, equipment, technology, et cetera. So that's what this goes into to benefit the hospital.
We're projecting at this point an annual savings of somewhere over $100,000 for our utility expenses.
And that savings is generated by the agreements that you would have with both the county and the town in waiving for personal property tax?
And you know what the numbers are without it?
They're higher. I don't know.
I'm assuming.
I don't know.
I can reject the tax life. Yeah, I can reject the tax.
He's aware of, you know, we either get this pilot or we don't and here's our two options, right?
We're at the point on this project, it's getting thinner and thinner, in all honesty.
What's like, what do you mean thinner and thinner?
On, there's been some, the, some of the equipment we need to get Mark in a hospital that they want is, for a lot of reasons, wildly more expensive than what everybody expected. So that's why, at some point, if the economics get out of whack, the project just doesn't make sense for them or for us. And so that's why every little bit on this side makes the project viable. At some point, you get past the point of no return. And so in this case especially, that tax really for the pilot program doesn't make a huge difference, but it makes enough.
The original projection, because we've been, the hospital's been looking at this for a system for several years. Systems cost anywhere between 3.5 and 4 million. You know, that's the budget. You walk into the dealership and that's what they'll tell you. With the equipment that Jack had mentioned, that it's called variable frequency drives, which is three specialized pieces of equipment that we need for the hospital because of our power. because of our power configuration that we receive from Delmarva, it's added an extra million dollars onto that typical dealer cost. So if the project is at like three point five, it's well over four million dollars. So it's trying to, again, bring some of that relief back because at some point, it may be that it's not where it's, it would be great for reliability for the hospital, we can never turn that part of that, but economically, it may not be as much savings. Is that answered?
Mr. Lemon, I'm going to open up the floor, because you always have a good question.
This is a good question. I'm assuming we're forfeiting dollars that we didn't have in the past.
That's correct.
And then, I haven't heard a figure from you on what the dollars are.
We haven't fully negotiated that yet.
Oh, it's negotiated, okay.
Well, I know what we're losing, I know what the savings are, so I think that there's a little bit there that we can, maybe, I feel that we should be getting as much as the county gets.
I mean, that's what you're here for, to figure out the number.
You know, the numbers are pretty transparent. Based on the rate from pilot that we came up with, when based on basically paying a twenty percent administration fee of the taxes that would be given. The county's rate happens to be nearly twice of what the town's rate is, so therefore, that's why the dollar value was different in those.
Well, here's what I've been asking the board. The board collectively feel okay with the program?
At this point, I do.
I do, I mean, whatever we can do to...
And what we'll do is, Lou, we're going to leave it up to you to get the agreement.
We'll develop the resolution, bring it back to the board, and that, that's what they're looking for.
Okay, perfect. We feel good about it, and what we're going to do is maybe creep that up just a little bit and send it back over to you. Mr. Lemon?
Will there be a time, a timeframe on this agreement?
Yeah, I think that you're...
A year or two years or something like that? Or maybe a little annual?
The, is this an annual amount, or is this a one-time amount?
No, it's an annual.
Annual amount, okay, well, that's a little bit different. I wasn't sure if it was that.
Oh, yeah, it's annual because in this...
It's a twenty-year agreement, unless the equipment itself goes away. So what we'll do is, we'll get that over to you. I know the time is of the essence, and hopefully, we'll have it all together where we can vote on it at the next meeting. Sound good? And listen, on the wastewater treatment side, I do want to meet with you, but I don't know...
I know you feel, I don't want to take, I'll call you or...
Perfect, let's do that.
We can look into it, and if the fact that we've got new generators eliminates the economics working, then we're the first person, first group to say it's not, doesn't work.
I can tell you, we just bought, I mean, literally, last fiscal week, or did we pay for it in this fiscal?
We have, the part of the wastewater treatment plant has a fifteen-hundred KW generator. The other part of the plant has a brand relatively new four-hundred KW and a hundred-and-fifty KW. So we've got a zillion pounds of power down there.
Okay, it might be worth looking under numbers, just because if you're recovering the heat, that makes the difference.
There's no personal property tax with us.
One other reason...
No, there you go.
Louis, are those generators for emergency purposes, or they run all the time?
Depends on, we have the agreement, but we run at certain times. Yeah, we have to run at certain times, so if we have peak loads, if Mark has a peak load, we'll run the fifteen KW for a while.
Again, having a power-producing plant that saves money over the utility costs on a daily basis might be something, too.
That's one of the reasons we put in a one-point-two megawatt solar panel.
If you're not in a pocket, and you can still save you money, that's why. I'm saying that might be an option.
I agree with you, and we have to look at it. So I'm going to hook you and Lou up here. Thank you so much, thank you guys.
Thank them. Bye now.
Okay, up next, Carly Timmons. Carly, come on down. Carly's going to talk to us about the American Cancer Society, Cecil County Relay for Life Update.
Hello, I'm Carly Timmons. I'm representing American Cancer Society as a community manager for Cecil County. I just wanted to update a little bit about our event that we have every year, and thank the town of Elton for all their support. It's tremendous, between logistically, financially, police board, trash pickup, and just letting us have a presence in the community. It's a tremendous help, so thank you for that. This year, the event will be at Elton High School on May nineteenth, Saturday, noon to midnight. So we just want to promote signing up teams and coming out to the event and just checking it out. It's really fun for families. We switched it from an overnight event. We thought that would be a little easier for some of the community members based on our feedback. And then another thing that we wanted to do this year was paint the town purple in the first weekend of May, so we just wanted to see if we could do that again. That was really fun last year, and the community requested that. So that's all I have, just a little update about some of our events, and thank you for your support.
Well, I can tell you, I very much appreciate the efforts that you guys do, and we're here to support in any way we can. And we've got a great team, we've got, Janey is our representative for our town to help us put that together, and we're going to start, we're going to start tomorrow in raising money, because I want us to get to ten thousand dollars this year. We've got to get to ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Very good. Anyone from the board have any questions, concerns?
I was at off-the-high school, and after the time, the administrative position, I remember they used to come in on Friday afternoon and getting ready for your all-night, or what type of feedback have you gotten since you've changed the ride around? I know it should be much easier, you've gone from noon to midnight.
Yeah, so this is the first year that we are changing from an overnight event. The overnight was really popular with the high school students and the middle school students. Some of them really loved staying overnight, it was a lot of fun. But generally, our feedback was, they don't have the time, or they wanted to bring their families to all-day, kind of family fun day, just so it'd be easier, we'd get more people to the event, a little bit more support. We really just want to promote some of the services that we have for survivors, people going through cancer, caregivers, and that's a better way to get word out about our support.
Oh, that's a great job.
Thank you.
Very touching. Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
What date is the relay, I'm sorry?
May nineteenth, Saturday, May nineteenth, yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is the Cecil Transit Update. Come on down. So we've got Suzanne Kornbacher?
Yes.
And Jonathan Kramer. Thank you guys so much. I know we requested for you to come in, and what I was looking at to accomplish, I would like to understand the route a little bit, maybe explain the route. And then I had a couple of comments that some of our seniors have made to me that maybe you could take back, and maybe we can make some improvements.
Sure, sure. But first of all, I want to thank you for having us tonight. I'm Suzanne Kornbacher, I'm the transit chief. And before Jonathan gets into a little more information about our routes, I just kind of want to tell you some of the exciting things that we have going on. The first thing that we have in the works is our transportation development plan, which is done every five years by a consultant funded through the MTA and the FTA. So we're in the middle of that, and we're really excited to see the recommendations on how transit should move forward in the next five years. Looking back to the past five years, we've really come a long way from basically just senior transportation to now a full fixed route system as well. We currently have four fixed routes, with Jonathan will give you more information on. We have a full demand response service, and our latest route is set to launch on April second of this year. It is going to be a commuter rail shuttle between the Newark train station and the Perryville train station, with a parking ride located at the halfway point at Cecil College. So we're really, really excited to be able to bridge the gap in rail service with the help through MTA and FTA. So, that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan to give you a little more information.
Absolutely. So the route you're probably most familiar with, we have four routes that we operate within the county, would be the Upton, or Upton-Glasgow connection. I guess you've seen them most of. So that's our bus that will come in through town here, make a lot of stops on a lot of different streets, that'll go out towards Hobbingsworth Manor. After there, it'll go on Forty for a bit, come down to thirteen, hit Springfield Gardens, hit Skidjet Court, go across the street, hit Upton Transitional before coming back out on the Forty, hitting a lot of businesses along its way down to People's Plaza. Once it gets there, comes back down, hits stops on Forty along its way, starts at the library and goes back through town all over again. So that's loop for the day. The other bus you might see a lot through town is the Upton-Newark connection, that's our number four route. That's going to connect you over to People's Plaza as well. More of a straight shot than Glasgow is, doesn't go through town as much, but that will connect you over to town Newark as well. That's our bus that will hit the, except the train station right now. You can still connect to that before we even start that new bus line. But, you know, take some connections between buses there. That bus then comes back down two-seventy-nine, coming back through town once again. Some of the ones you might not be as familiar with would be the Perryville route. Comes in through town a little bit, stops in Union Hospital, Acton. That bus will service the Route Four, Route forty-four to our Fittmore. Lots of businesses, that's where we're stopping with Amazon right now, as well as the new businesses that will be coming in in that area. Goes all the way down to Perryville, hits the VA, hits stops coming out of town as well. The Mid-County would be our other route. It's a lot of same stops as Perryville, but doesn't service Forty as much. Is more hitting key points, hits the Cecil College Northeast, which is the only route that does that. It's also the only route that goes into Charleston, so it's a way we get to hit in there. Also, something we do with that fixed route service is that you're able to deviate up to three quarters of a mile off the fixed route. It's a four-dollar flat fee for anybody who wants to do that. Something you have to schedule ahead of time, but a way you can access those places if buses are typically filled, if you need to get to those locations. Any questions on those routes, or please say any feedback, if you'd love to hear?
Well, I think, the one that's kind of in our downtown, how long does it take the whole route?
The one that comes through town, Glasgow connection, is about an hour, about an hour fifteen, depending on if it's got a break on it.
One of the, probably the major comment that I had has been that some of our seniors that take the route, and if they make it to the Acton or to the shopping center and they get their groceries, they have to go a long route before they get back into the heart of the town.
Correct. Right now, we do not run our routes in separate directions. We don't have, say, a loop inbound and loop outbound. We don't really have the ability to run that at this point in time.
There's not enough ridership right now, I'm assuming, or what do you mean?
I think that's probably what our transportation development plan that we're in the middle of will help determine. Probably the route that needs the most help with time is our Perryville route. It's an hour and forty-five minutes between loops.
Possibly two fifteen if it's on a loop with a break on it.
Exactly, so that's where we think we'll need, the transportation development plan will point us in that direction. And that plan's very important in order for us to get the funding that we need from MTA and FTA to be able to support those routes. So that kind of drives the funding as well. So, with that being said, you know, there might be an opportunity for us even to combine our Mid-County connection with our Perryville route to increase the level of service, you know, increase the frequency of service. Also, there may be opportunity to look at our Glasgow route and our Newark route, which kind of serve the same areas, and maybe combine service and maybe do opposite routes. So these are possibilities that will be looked at going into the future. But at this point, you know, we're kind of have our hands tied until we get through that process.
Will you certainly help me understand how long it takes? Because I can respond back now, that this is just kind of the way it is. Now, is there, the other comment was, and this came from, we had met with the Portish Company that has, that owns the Big Up Mall, and they would be willing to put an actual stop in for you somewhere in that mall where there would be like an overhang during the weather and so forth. Is there any, what do I want to say, any codes or requirements?
It would have to be ADA-approved or ADA-accessible, but we can definitely get that information together.
That would be great, if you could actually get it to Gene.
Sure, absolutely.
That'd be wonderful. One of the things that they wanted to get away from was the stop is right there at the Acton. And they tend to, good, bad, or indifferent, it just seems like a lot of loitering at times at those, and the perception...
Yeah, absolutely.
You understand, I certainly know you understand, and, but they're willing to pay for that structure, and I think the sooner that we can get that information, that would be great.
Absolutely, that would be wonderful.
Anyone from the board have any?
I have a question on the bus schedule itself. We used to get them, because I'm in the visitor's center of the industry, and we used to get them a lot, and now we print them out for people. Do you still have them?
Absolutely, and they're like my car. I distribute them around town, so I can always make you a stop down the visitor's center.
Yeah, please. And does Tourism have them as well?
I'm not sure that they do.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Do we have them here?
I'd be happy to get them to the seniors' stores as well.
We probably could, do we have?
We print them out, but if you want to bring them by.
Oh, absolutely.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes, Gene?
Could you talk to ridership over the past few years? How it increases, decreases, stays the same?
Sure, unfortunately, I'm not prepared to give you really great information, but really, over the last five years, ridership has really increased. We are actually seeing a little bit of a law this year, but that's not unusual. That's kind of the transit system in general. And I think as we make improvements to our transit system, we'll continue to see growth. I think that we've seen a change in who uses the service. That's probably the biggest change that we've seen. You know, for the longest time, it was seniors that accessed our transit system. Now, people are using it to get to jobs, people are using it to get to medical appointments, shopping, all sorts of reasons. So we're reaching a broader scope, and I think that's the most exciting thing that we've accomplished in the last several years.
Very good. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Ron.
And we'll be in touch.
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Okay, Lou, you were on.
The first item I have tonight is ordinance two. The ordinance two is a amendment to code, specifically the buildings in construction under chapter fifteen point sixteen. These are recommended by the owner of the wrong well, the building official. And since it's a very extensive section, chapter, I will just indicate the changes that are being made. Under fifteen sixteen oh one zero definitions, the definition of accessory structure is added, which means not limited to a garage, attached or detached, a shed, a swimming pool, or a cool house. Additionally, central heating is amended to include areas, and shall we also include centrally located floor furnace, ducts, many flood systems, and electric baseboard heaters located in all habitable rooms. Back here further, under the Article Two Minimal Standards Conflicts, the words "all dwellings, dwelling units, and accessory structures" are added. We're forgetting all this. Under fifteen sixteen one hundred, "heating," the words "sufficient heat" or "heating equipment is struck" and "central heating" is added. And under fifteen sixteen one three zero, "property maintenance conditions of structure." Under A, the words are added, "all dwelling and accessory structures" are added. One of the reasons these changes are being made is because when the building official and the code people go to enforce some of the standards here for rental housing in particular, then at least, I guess, courts have not allowed the prosecution of those cases to be successful because of property definitions and words and were not actually included. be successful because of property definitions and words and were actually included in the ordinance. So these words are being added to give enforcement, strength to the code and the building official for rental housing.
Do we have a motion to, for introduction to introduce ordinance 2-2018 Housing Standards? And we have a motion, a second, any discussion on that? Hearing on all in favor. Motion carries.
The next item I have is the American Great Cross. They have rented our building down there next to the Department of Public Works for a number of years now. And a year or two ago, they went by, they decided to rent it on a year-to-year basis. The current lease expires March 30th, 2018, and they are requesting a extension term, actually the Seventh Amendment to the lease agreement, that will allow them to occupy that building at, for April 1st, 2018 through March 30th, 2019. And American Great Cross, as the board is well aware, is a very valuable asset to have in our community. And this building, we do not need this building at this particular time, so a year-to-year lease is not in a contrarian public interest. I would recommend that the board authorize the Seventh Amendment to the lease agreement with American Great Cross for the rental of 207 Blue Wall Avenue for a one-year period.
We have a motion to approve the Seventh Amendment lease with the American Great Cross for 207 Blue Wall Avenue for a one-year extension. Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing on all in favor. Motion carries.
Next item I have is the Town of Elkton Annexation Policy. The board may be well aware that annexation policy was adopted in 2006. However, when I reviewed the policy, I noted that the references, legal references for 238 Section 19 no longer exist. It was repealed by the General Assembly, Maryland General Assembly, and now the municipal, I mean, the local government article prevails. And the policy statement is only changed with respect to, reference to the sections of law that are current, rather than any change of substantive nature to the text of the thing. This policy statement has been reviewed by council, and I believe that it is, believes that it's all correct.
Do we have a motion to accept the Town of Elkton Annexation Policy presented for?
Actually, it's a, you cast this as a policy.
Yeah, it's just a policy statement. We have a motion.
Sorry.
And a second. Any discussion on this policy statement? Hearing on all in favor. Motion carries.
Resolution R3, I believe the board, I sent a copy of this to the board, I'll read this resolution. A resolution of the Mayor Commissioners and Town Development supporting the application of 120 EM LLC to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development's Neighborhood Business Works Program to provide financial assistance for the development of Elk River Brewing Company, 112 East Main Street, Elkton, Cecil County, Maryland. Whereas the Mayor Commissioners support and encourage business development in commercial areas of the town, including downtown business district, where 120 EM LLC is the owner of real property identified tax map, 310 Horace L. 1166, addressed at 112 East Main Street, where 112 EM LLC will establish the Elk River Brewing Company. And whereas 120 EM LLC applies to the Neighborhood Business Works Program for financial assistance to support the development of the Elk River Brewing Company, which includes a craft brewery and taproom. And whereas 120 EM LLC properties located in Elkton, a sustainable community, and a priority funding area, and within the town center zoning district, where production brewery and pub brewery with a Maryland Class 5M production brewery license and a Maryland Class 6M pub brewery license are conditionally permitted. Now therefore, be it resolved if American Commissioners consistent with requirements of Neighborhood Business Works Program, fully support 120 EM LLC's application of financial assistance to the Neighborhood Business Works Program for the development of the Elk River Brewing Company at 112 Main Street, Elkton. If further resolved, a copy of this resolution be sent to Mr. Michael Alinsky, Director of Business Learning Programs, Neighborhood Business Works Program, Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, 7800, Arkins Road, Landville, Maryland 20706.
We have a motion to approve Resolution R3-2018. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on yours, Elk River Brewing Company? All I can say is I'm extremely excited.
Yeah, I am too.
Hearing on all in favor. Motion carries. Time completes my items. Okay, very good. I was in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, the last couple days, and we took a couple ride through the area, and they're battling water main breaks, just like we're battling water main breaks also. But Dan, how many water main breaks have we had?
Twenty-six since the first of the year.
Twenty-six since the first year. And listen, I applaud you and the Public Works Department for getting them done. I think the longest that anyone's been without any water was probably that eight-hour period, maybe, that was in probably one of the worst places that we could ever have a water main break.
Wasn't for the crowd, it'd be quicker, but you know, 35-year-old grand will do that to you.
But in most cases, your team is able to dig that hole, put it together, in three to four hours, right?
Exactly. They're very quick and very efficient.
They do a fantastic job. Now, once the, I just wanted to confirm this, once, of course, once it warms up, our water meter program, where are we at on that? I just want to, are we doing the pilot or are we not doing a pilot? We are doing the pilot, correct?
Correct.
Very good. So we're going to do that pilot in Turquist. Is that still?
Delancey Village.
Delancey Village. Delancey Village, okay, very good. And that'll give us an idea of how the whole project's going to work. Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. And that'll happen when the, once we, the season breaks a little bit here.
Soon as the water mains behave.
All right, perfect, perfect. With that, that's actually all I have. Gene, you're on.
Well, I wanted to thank you too, Dan. I've never seen so many potholes pop up in a long time, but what I did notice about them is that your guys were around them and taking care of them, so thank you for that. Mr. Ginder, I've been wanting to ask you, did you get your water issue addressed?
Yes, yeah.
All good?
It's good. It's fine.
Good to hear that.
Yes.
I'm happy to meet you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have nothing else.
What do I have? I don't know. First of all, I'd like to thank all the town officials who supported the Martin Luther King program that writes on Monday. It's a community thing, and certainly he had better great support. And the speaker was outstanding, and I think you all know that, and it was great that, as he said, to the crowd that he saw, and he always mentioned Elkton, he didn't know Elkton was like it was, and I think he went away with good vibes. He acknowledged the police department and Mr. Fisher's Elkton, that made it good. I wish I had a sign, your sign at the time, because I thought, time would be have there.
For his picture.
That would have been great.
That would have been great.
That would have been. We are Elkton, rather, but it was good. Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you for inviting us on. Thank you for having us.
That was moving.
Get lost. That's it. Earl, I have nothing. There's Karen.
I just quickly want to put it in the back of everyone's head. When I came on this board, Earl and Charlie, because we're working on a rec center, you were working on a rec center before I was on the board. While in office, Commissioner Ponder requested $500,000 to put aside for the rec center. And it's kind of been like this. And I would really like us to start discussing that, or I should say, community center, for the children, for the seniors, for, you know, we have a lot of people out there that are looking for something to do, and with Earl, with his basketball, and getting gyms, and Charlie's so involved in that, and you as well, with the Sun Adult Sports we were talking about. So if we could get some conversation going and see what we need to do to move forward.
I would say let's put it on the 14th of February's workshop.
Great.
And we'll kind of give a recap of where we're actually at.
Perfect.
And where your $500,000 is.
Yeah.
Hey, will they give a minute?
Just to add to that.
Then I'll put you on the spot. I'd like to thank the mayor Joe for bringing that up. I know being in Elkton, I live there, but to deal with those athletes and those kids up there, they need someplace to go. They have no place to go. And a lot of issues and problems they have, it's not our fault, but hopefully the town can be able to help. And why I'm going to put Earl on the spot, he and I are both members of the YMCA, and now Earl, you can take over.
How do you know I was going to bring that up? We just attended the meeting today, and just for record, there have been some concerns the kids have no place to go because of the, they want to use the word merger of the YMCA, even though it's a, it's a good thing I'm saying, so the, it's not the town issue, it's a, well, it's a county thing. So the merger has changed from just using a pass for the kids to get in, like on a day like this when they're out of school, they could pay about $5 or $10 or get in. But we want to emphasize that the plan has changed where if the parents now, the parents have to be involved with, they have to bring their tax return or form in to show where they fall in as far as for their income. Most of these kids can probably go without having to pay $5 to $10 for the whole year instead of every time they actually go into the YMCA. This is a good thing, because I know I've got a grandson that goes in here four or five times a week, and if he pays $5, that's $25. Based on his family income, he could probably pay $30 or less than that, buy their percentage, and get in there for the whole year as a member. So they give a two-year membership, they said. So through this report, I'd rather just say, please have the parents go into the Y, request the application, fill the application there, and the kids might be able to attend with less than $12, based on what we talked about today. Based on their income. So I'm just saying that for record, because the kids come to us and we have to explain, we didn't have explanation, so hopefully that can be some kind of where we can share that with other, just here. Hopefully, the YMCA will get things out to the schools so they can hand out to the families. That's it.
Okay, this is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor for the public. Yes, sir. State your name and address again.
Agent Gifford, 214 Newark Street. Same motion as before, looking forward to the end of the proclamation. I would like to add to that, though. I'd like to recommend to Officer Dan Morgan for Police Officer of the Year, he's given two safety presentations to the seniors, the senior residents, and absolutely fantastic, absolutely fabulous. So, you know, that's my proposal.
Thank you. And I will tell you, we will take it to heart and we'll consider those.
Thank you very much.
We absolutely will.
I'm sincere.
Well, he's currently a colonel over there now. I'm not sure if we can put four stars on him or not.
And I would like to see him.
That's right. That's right. You'll get a picture taken with the chief tonight, I want to let you know that. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Lemon, yes, sir.
How does the armory fit into the rec center?
The, currently, right now, the communication in regards to the armory, the latest that we have is that they were moving forward with some appraisal work?
It's in a clearinghouse process right now. It goes through an elaborate and complex bureaucracy before it ever gets to the point where the building would be made available. But it has been declared surplus by the National Guard, so it's not going to be used for National Guard purposes once the armory decent is built, because then the National Guard, except for recruiting over here, the all-of-futly military aspects of voting.
And I think we'll talk about that on the workshop day. And I think that that's kind of put us a little bit from moving forward with our original plans, let me just put it that way. I think that we have, we truly have a kind of a mixed tour up here. I think we all want the armory, but we all also believe that we need a dedicated community center also. And maybe, maybe one could serve as both. We may or may not believe that, so that's where we're kind of at, I think. And we'll get to the bottom of that.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
I read the Baltimore song about what Dan's talking about. They have the same problem, pipes. Gets cold in the air when it warms up, it breaks when it warms up. But the question is, and I had a question a few years ago, about why we wouldn't have a plan to replace or upgrade the pipe system, you know, maybe a piece has been upgraded over time. I was told it wasn't necessary because we just didn't do what Dan did. I'm not so sure that we should have a longer-term plan, because it's probably the problem in Elkton is probably the same as in Baltimore, that the pipes are very old and they're just not up to the standard.
It could well be, but we'll absolutely discuss that. And I know one thing that we're, we're going to have for the budget, the budgeting, I really want us to continue the loop system in our community, and it's going to be a pretty expensive project, we know that. But if you have a water main break over here, you'll be able to turn the valve, and you'll still be able to get water feeding around the other side. So there's a couple areas in town, and that one part was the area where we didn't have the loop system. So we're going to, that's something I'm going to bring to the board. We've actually had, Matt Groan, I think, years ago did the drawings on. We know what we have to do, but that's something that we're going to move forward with in 2018, 2019 for sure.
That's new to me.
It'll be pretty neat. Anyone else have anything to say? Mr. Eddie Grinder, I mean Ed Ginder?
This is to back up what Earl was talking about. A couple months ago, I met with the head divine superintendent of other schools. Thompson Estates and Gilpin Manor students, 75% of those students are fed daily, and some of them are given food to take home for the weekend, because that's the only food they're going to get. Forty percent of the children in the whole county are fed daily meals, in the whole county. And that figure would probably be higher, but the children in the middle schools are ashamed or don't take the time to apply for the program. I applaud Earl and Charlie for getting involved in this with the kids.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
And you know, it's so unfortunate, I see so many kids, well, I'm not going to warn them, that actually come to school in this cold weather with no coats and some of, no pants, and that's the conditions that they're in. I know I take a young man from basketball practice to Hobbingsworth Manor, he's on the JV team, and sometime after school, he would ride his bike in that cold weather all the way to school, and the kids would say, well, how did you come up here on a bike, let alone with no clothes? But it's committed that the young man asked, or some of these kids had some trying time, so, you know, we try to do what we can do for them.
Yeah, and I believe, and lest things have changed in the last year, that all elementary schools are considered Title I schools now.
Pretty much.
Very good. Anyone else have anything to say? Chief, do you have anything? Any comments? Can you stick around for a photograph?
Oh, sure.
All right, very good. This meeting's adjourned.